Is everybody signed in?
Yes.
Can you state your names and your affiliation with the project for the record, please?
Hi, Axel, Axel, Ashen, Ziegler, with various engineers and planners of this project.
Jonathan, Hovasch, Joshua, Associate Architects.
And Sarah Holligan with George Gosh, Associate Architects.
Okay, you want to explain your project to us, please?
Sure. Basically, what they'd like to do is two buildings, two separate buildings on site, they'd like to create building addition that would tie both buildings together and make it essentially one building. And we went to PRC, but this building that we may need to hold school parking, so what we did is we added eleven local school parking spaces on the south side of the building. And we received comments, Cheryl's comments have been sent in to us, we have no issues, we can't get any comments that we receive.
Is there anybody in the audience that's here for this application to hear it? Okay, the comments will be available in the back, I'm gonna just read them for brevity. The PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies for this project. From the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, he has four. Rock County Department of Planning. Mr. Axel, you're okay with those?
No, we received any comments.
Thank you. Rock County Highway, nothing. Rock County Health, two. Rock County Drainage, it's within the jurisdiction of the RCDA, Rock County Drainage?
Yes, you understand that drainage permit will be...
Annual required, yes, and a permit will be required. Rock County Sewer, none. Correspondents from the ZBA in Rock County Highway and the Rock County Department of Health not objecting to this board serving as lead agency. Jane Slaven, has two. Booker Engineering, sufficient detail and drainage calculations have been provided demonstrate the potential significant impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the bulk quang meditation center site plan application be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments, and there are seven. And that's all I have, Cheryl. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions or anything pertaining to those comments?
None, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board. Mr. Young?
I really have no comments. The proposed addition, square footage ones, is... Over two floors. I have no other comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I have no comments. Okay, thank you. Mr. Sweeney?
I think you kind of answered my question right now.
I was wondering, the height of this new addition, it's same as the buildings next to it, it's kind of one level, or is it?
It's you can line up the existing building.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Mendel?
No questions, this, I'm glad you're still doing it in the Dutch colonial style.
Yes.
To keep it historically correct.
The square footage describes, it's fourteen hundred thirty, I want four.
Oh, I want four, okay. That's okay.
Three thousand.
Okay.
The upstairs performance is actually a little smaller.
It's still not gigantic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bond?
This is out there in the historic area.
I don't know, is it in the historic area?
I think it did last time, that's what I asked.
Yeah.
You did a nice job, I mean, it looks, it looks great, as long as you keep the same architecture, I don't have any issues with it.
I agree with Mr. Bond, yes.
Yep. There was one other item that Mr. Garvey didn't read in. A project review says the PRC recommends that a note be added to the site plan that states that sleeping is not allowed in the original conference center. So that will be added to the...
We want that note.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience, in public, that wishes to comment on this? Make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Need a motion, I make a motion for lead agency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I make a... Sorry, go ahead. Okay. I make a motion for neg deck.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. And I make a motion for preliminary with conditions.
Second.
Not yet. PRC's condition. Bruce Peters, four. Rock County Planning's nine. Rock County Health, two. Rock County Drainage. Booker Engineering, seven. Jane Slaven, two. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, next item is PB eighteen twenty-four, Dean Oning Conditional Use Permit Plan. This is a conditional use permit? Yes.
Charles Collishaw. This is a...
Okay, hold on, I'm sorry. Okay, could you just tell us your name and what your association of project was?
Yes, sir, my name is Charles Collishaw, I'm the owner of Dean Onings, and also the owner of five twenty-seven dash five twenty-nine, Route three oh two.
Okay, thank you. Could you explain what your project is? I think conditional use permit, condition of use permit, you want to go into a little depth on that, please?
Yes, sir. We're a Oning company, we're one of the last remaining Oning companies in the area that actually manufacture and produce our own pallets and freighters. So we'd like to use the building to continue to do that. And the company's been in that building for about seven or eight years now. I just purchased the full shares of the business in December of two thousand seventeen. I purchased the building in July of two thousand seventeen. Apparently, when I purchased it, I checked the files for violations, there were none in the file, but apparently there were some violations. I'd like to correct the violations and continue manufacturing and doing what we do.
Okay, can I... Jane, what's going, can you elaborate on that, please?
The occupancy was never granted, was never an application made for the Oning companies to be working with. Prior, all is on record as storage and warehouse, not manufacturing. Manufacturing is actually, needs to be approved by the planning board. It's on board of our zoning board, use...
Okay, uh, okay, so is there anybody else in the audience that's here to listen to this?
Okay, you want...
I'm going. Okay. The PRC has no comments. Has five. Per the bulk table regulations, the following non-conforming bulk exists, does that mean that they have to go to ZBA?
Yes, they have to go to ZBA. They also, as part of the condition of any approval for this use, they have to go to the standard ZBA.
Okay, so then, we're not giving them final tonight, we're just giving them preliminary, okay. So there's, did you, were you able to read these comments? Did you see them?
I did read them, I didn't really understand it very well, so if you could elaborate on that.
Okay, well, I'll read them, then. The requested use requires a conditional use approval by the planning board, which is why you're here. Square footage of existing building shall be indicated on the plan, that's pretty straightforward. Per chapter forty-three, attachment eighteen, notes to use in bulk tables, note number four in the LO and the LIO districts, the floor area devoted to the manufacturing of prototype products may not exceed twenty-five percent of the total gross floor area of the building. This calculation shall be indicated on the plan, again, pretty straightforward. Per three point eleven, column seven, number two, accessory storage and loading burst shall be in completely enclosed buildings. Plans indicate outdoor storage of containers, material storage, or actually require approval from the zoning board of appeals. Okay, so you'll have to go there. And then you have the bulk regulations that have to be approved by the zoning board as well, which is number five. Are you with me so far?
Yes, sir.
Okay. From Bruce Peters, he doesn't have any comments. From the Rock County Department of Planning, they have four comments. But if you're sending this out to everybody, then this should all be taken care of. You'll see number three, about a bulk table including parking needs must be provided on the plan, you'll have to, you'll have to conform to these, these four comments. Are you with me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Rock County Sewer doesn't have any. Rock County Highway doesn't have any. And then there's correspondence from Rock County Highway, Rock County Health, Orange Town, ZBA, not objecting to us serving as lead agency. Okay, this is just building permit stuff, it's not really necessary. That's all I have, Cheryl. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and that's, this is, you'll just have to get this stuff taken care of, you should be fine.
Okay.
But you'll have to go to the ZBA and make sure...
That's a separate application and board to be corrected?
Yes, and then you have to come back here.
Okay.
Once that's all, if you get all those approvals, then you come back here.
All right.
Wasn't the comments that you just worked out, need to be on the plan and break by ZBA?
Right.
If you call me in the opposite place, the floor could be...
Do you have plans already? I mean, you must have the plans.
I have a survey from Jay Greenwell.
You're gonna need, isn't he gonna need, like, a site plan?
I'm gonna need a site plan.
You're gonna have to go see an engineer, or, you know, somebody, and get this worked out, can't...
That's the plan submitted, at this point it's really just a survey.
Yeah, so, I mean, this preliminary will get...
That is all stuff that Jay Greenwell does, correct?
You can ask him, he's right there.
No.
But you can ask him after you're done here.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Young, you have any questions or comments?
No, I appreciate the applicant doing his due diligence, trying to clean this up, and I agree with Mr. Garvey, if you work with Mrs. Slaven here, you shouldn't have any problems.
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, we had a, there was a troublesome tenant on the property, one of the old properties has gone down, we're trying to clean up the lot and make it be good neighbors.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Garvey?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
No further comments.
Mr. Mendel?
No further comments.
Mr. Bond?
Continue preliminary, go to ZBA.
Yeah.
Can we, will you do preliminary tonight?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we have a motion? Do you make one? No, no, no. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, is there anybody from the public that wishes to make comment on this? I see none, I hear none, I make a motion to close the public portion. Second, Mr. Bond, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Make a public, I make a motion for lead agency.
Seconds.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. I need a motion, I make a motion for neg deck.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. And I make a motion for preliminary with conditions. And the conditions are... Jane Slaven's five. Rock County Planning, four. Is that it?
That's it.
That's it.
Right, he needs to come up.
Well, they know, I mean, so it has to go to, right, so you'll have to, I mean, this is not a condition, but you'll have to get your plans together, go to ZBA, and then come back and get final.
Second.
No, no, he has to ask, I'm not the chair anymore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Next up. Okay, next item is PB sixteen seventy-three, Maloney Subdivision. Please sign in. Give your name to the clerk for the record.
Jay Greenwell answered there. Donald Rutter, attorney.
Who's speaking?
I will start.
Okay, before you start, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to hear this application? They are, please step forward, come all the way up in front, this way you can hear Okay, Mr. Rutter?
Okay, this particular subdivision has been around for a while. One of the problems here is that there is a stream on this problem which is very, very dangerous. The water goes through there, my client, they're young children, people label them as young children, and it's going to be a very serious problem. My client worked with the town of Orange Town to take this open channel and pipe it. The design was made by Booker Engineering, and we were prepared to go forward with it. Popping off this connection has to be made from Naver to the north. South, to the south, I figured that, to the south. The last time I met you, when we were here, you said, well, see, we get permission from Mr. Dean to connect the connection. I did get a letter from Mr. Dean, which I believe you have, that says if the board approves it, he will permit him to connect into the system. I have not been able to get permission from Naver to the south, based on the fact he's not around, I went to talk to him, but he's not around. We wish to go forward with it because we have to go to the zoning board, and then certain variances from the zoning board say that we can proceed with the project. My client is going to take the full expense of hyping this situation, and that's the reason he is subdividing the property and leaving it alive. We are in a holding time right now, we can't get into the zoning board unless the planning board grants us preliminary.
Well, are we allowed to do all this if, if the neighbor's not allowed, we're not contacting him to, to connect?
If this, that's a condition, and he doesn't test it.
I would like to correct that a little bit, if I can just follow.
Yes.
If you take a look at the connection that has to be made, the connection that has to be made was the pipe was put into the wrong place. The town does have an easement, the pipe, the pipe was put into the affected place and approved by the town. When I say approved by the town, nobody, nobody called for an as-built drawing. When we did the survey, we found the pipe's in the wrong place. We spoke to Mr. Dean about this at the project review committee meeting, and we stated very basically, if you do not get permission, then we have a right to go in there and put the pipe on the right spot. Going hard for the person's property, put the pipe where it belongs, and then we don't need permission.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just make the point clear. The gray area that's stippled here is the proposed easement where the area would be piped. The Naver to the south, the culvert attachment area is just out of the easement. The easement straddles the common property line here. This is the town drainage easement, and this is the end of the pipe. It's piped here, and it's also piped north of Fisher. This area is open, and what happens is, it spreads out in a rainstorm, leaves and debris clog this culvert, and it spills out and creates this whole area where it becomes flooded. The highway department has to go in, and they have to continuously clean away, brush the trees, the twigs, and get this water flowing again. So there's a trash rack here, but it keeps getting clogged. Mr. Maloney is willing to take on, and Mr. Maloney will take on the expense of doing this, but this portion of the drainage system that was installed is not in this easement. At the worst case, they would have to pipe it to a point where it is in the easement. If we, if that's our only other option, that would be available, but if the homeowner to the south would be granted license for a small private easement to formalize what condition is there, the town was on a tight property, so it's either a prescribed easement at this point for maintaining, so that's the basis.
Just so I understand, so either you will get the license or easement from the neighbor, or else you will do something on...
We've got a town pipe on the town, you know what's correct.
Mm-hmm. So that's the second option.
That was the second option, if you remember correctly, we were supposed to go, Mr. Dean and I were supposed to go see the party, the party's out of town, and I called him, we said, I'm out of town, I cannot make a meeting. So I think it's a good option, because if we go onto the spot where the easement is, this property's really going to be protected, much, much more than just a simple connection. So what we're really looking for is permission to go forward, subject to either putting the pipe in that channel, or getting permission to connect for the license.
Thank you. The PRC has no additional comments. There's three variances that are needed, and two more comments from Jane Slaven. Okay, so is, so Mazur is now our consultant for drainage on this, is that right?
Yes.
Right, okay.
You were...
Right, okay.
...lines.
Overall, the proposed stormwater management plan meets the intent of the regulations, and therefore we recommend the Maloney subdivision be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments, and there are ten. Rock County Planning, seven. Mr. Brenner?
We have no problem with the questions that are being asked, we just want to state one thing to the item from Mrs. Slaven's...
Hold on, I think, I'll talk about planning.
We don't have a problem.
And whatever you have to Mrs. Slaven, you can work out.
We just want you to know that the pits have the soil sample for it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so there's nothing for the Rock County Highway department?
Yeah.
Rock, what?
Rock County Health.
You therefore believe the matter shall be used on both, we want other agencies involved in projects, for the best interest of the public, so that's not a condition.
No problem.
Rock County Sewer, nothing. Rock County Health, mosquito code. And then that's all I have. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
According to Bruce Peters, PBME, his comments from December eighth of sixteen, still in practice?
All right, hold on.
Get them back. You are twelve.
Okay, so there's twelve comments from Bruce Peters, okay? From December eighth, two thousand sixteen. Mr. Man, Mr. Brenner?
Mr. Greenwell?
Well, it doesn't matter, you have to work it out with them.
We're gonna work it out. That's the answer.
I said that, I said December eighth, two thousand sixteen. Hold on. And Jimmy Dean.
We do have Jimmy Dean's letter.
Okay, please be, this is from December seventh, two thousand sixteen. Please be advised that review of the PB number sixteen dash seventeen, seventy-three proposed plan, which the new driveway follows and covers the drainage easement, which includes thirty inches HDPE and drain structures, the town of Orange Town should not be liable for any damages to the driveway caused by system malfunction and/or regular or emergency response required to maintain the system.
You don't have a problem.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Young?
I'll go back to my feelings about flag lots, Mr. Brennan, you know I don't like flag lots at all, but we did look at this project in, what was it, January of seventeen? And you asked for a continuance.
That's correct.
We got Mr. Dean's letter, the perk tests that Mr. Mendel had requested are being performed, or will be performed.
They will perform.
Will perform. The only question I have is, you know, not having the neighbor's blessing on this project to the south bothers me.
Very much disturbed, it too, but we have a very dangerous situation. If you go there during the storm, you'll see some child goes and get out of pipe.
It's been like that for thirty years.
Fifty years, I've been there for fifty years.
Young children are neighbor right now, we have to tell you, you know, this...
We'll get to the public portion.
Well, this is the largest situation, but she told me, it's a very dangerous situation, where she's afraid her own children have children in the neighborhood, if they fall in there, it's not like she can be there, we say.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Garvey, anything else? Nope. Mr. Sweeney?
I share some, Mr. Young, concerns about the flag lots. I understand that there might be some kind of situation here with flooding that needs to be addressed, and I realize that's a concern, I'm not sure that necessarily means it has to be divided into a flag lot to make it happen, I think they're two separate things. You know, getting rid of the water is one issue, subdividing the property is a whole different issue, and I think we should consider them separate, that's why there's a couple of variances need to be sorted from the Board of Appeals to make this flag lot fit, so I see there's two separate issues right now, but I'm listening.
We do have to say that, the only way they're going to do it, they can't, not their paying for the pipe, their paying for all the work, they cannot do the work unless they're getting, getting control of that.
The other thing is that, we're not, we're not the ones that make the rules about the flag lots. The flag lots are allowed by, by code, and the other thing is, is that, we've been, I've been fighting, you know, everybody's been here, sitting there, talking about flag lots for fourteen years that I've been on this board, and nobody from the town, the town board has done anything, which means that they don't care either. So we're not, I don't think we should punish an applicant for making a flag lot if they're allowed in the town. It's, it's kind of, you know...
I'm just stating my opinion, I am allowed to care.
As they might.
But it's not, it's, but the thing is, is that you, but you're, you're, you're preventing somebody who has a right to do something from doing it, because you, you don't feel that they're right, but they are, it doesn't, our, our opinions in this is not, you know, it, it should be what's allowed, not what, you know, whether or not we like them or not, if it's allowed and they're following the rules, then they should, we should push them forward, I mean, we've been, this is what we've said from, for years.
Thank you, Mr. Garvey.
It's my opinion, I'm not stating, I'm not stating an approval on the project, I'm just telling you my feelings, as Mr. Sweeney is as well.
Anything else, Mr. Sweeney? That's, that's all for now. Mr. Mendel?
Yeah, a couple of questions. On the EAF, number seventeen, it was revised to yes on page two. Part A and B, you didn't answer, is that, will any water flow onto adjacent properties, and will the stormwater discharge be directed to established conveyance systems? Is that a yes, no?
It's going to establish, yes.
Okay, so please correct those on the EAF, I would appreciate.
Okay, well...
Thank you. Now, that PVC pipe that's gonna, it's gonna be used to divert the stream, how many feet of fill is gonna be put over in order to cover that and make that a level area? Looks like, I think, is it one or more feet? I'm looking at the elevations, I wasn't sure on that.
It looks like about a minimum of two feet in general.
Now, will that, is that gonna prevent flooding on the charity property, or is that gonna cause flooding to the property?
No, the engineer, the engineer that did the design has incorporated several elements to make sure that the property is one of the properly drained, as well as convey the runoff from Fisher Avenue.
from Fisher Avenue down through the existing drainage system that goes through the neighborhood to the south. And there are swales and additional yard outlets to pick up surface flows from the neighbor as well as contain the driveway runoff so that it doesn't go off.
Okay, and if the neighbor to the south there agrees to a connection of the piping, any flow, is there any access into that drainage system then or is the other things, the swales or whatever else, will that correct the condition or is that going to have water ponding on the area?
No, it would correct the condition. And the flow to the, the flow that is now expands into the wet area or the channel when it floods will be eliminated because of the flow to be contained within the pipe. So we're backing up the flood flows at the junction on the neighbor's property to the south will not be treated.
Okay, all right, so you answered the thing about the driveway being dolved, you concurred with Jim Dean's statement to be put on?
Yes, you can indemnify the town so that they have to go to get access to, if the project were approved, they would be able to use the driveway because it would be part of the easement to the town. They won't have to be able to, if they need to fix something, since it would be a town easement, the owner would be responsible.
Okay, now the piping that's coming from the north and then continues to the south of the property, what is that, 30 inch or 48 inch?
30 inch, high density polyethylene, that's an HPE.
Okay, that's going to, that's the pipe that comes in from the north, it's 30 inches currently? Because I think there was some question...
It's a squash pipe, it's not a 30, it's equivalent, from what I understand from the engineering board, it's equivalent to 30.
Yeah, was there some question back then, or was it a 48 originally, or was it?
It was 48 by 20 something. The engineer determined that it is equivalent to 30 inch.
Okay, so it's equal to a 30 inch, okay. And the pipe to the south is also 30 inch?
That's a 30 inch reinforced concrete.
Okay, that's where it goes into that culvert with the grading there. Okay, and... Okay, no, any portion of that stream going to be left open or is totally going to be closed?
If this project were to move forward and get approved in this fashion, it would all be closed except, no, it would all be in place.
Okay, either option, going into the pipe or diverting it over to the easement area?
Correct.
And if it goes over to the easement area, it'll be connected into that pipe down the, down the, on the easement?
Further down the easement where the pipe is within the easement.
Okay, and that other piping, I should be left open there? If you had to go, if you had to go the other way, if the neighbor to the south doesn't give you approval to connect there and you use the, going to the easement, going to the east and then connecting to the piping there, that other culvert still be left open there, I would imagine?
No, it should, it should be removed.
Right.
Because it's not in the easement, it should be removed because otherwise it would be a nuisance because animals, rodents could get in there and that would have to be removed.
Okay, nothing further at this time, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barley? All right, we're going to open it up to the public. Want anybody who has any comments on this, please step forward. You're going to be allowed three minutes per person, so please step up, give us your name, your address, and step up to the podium, please.
Hi, hello. Yeah, my name is Haig Yeranossian. I'm the north side neighbor.
Can you talk into that microphone?
Oh. Hello? I'm sorry?
You can't move it.
Okay, first name is Haig, H-A-I-G, and the last name, it's a little longer, Y as in yellow, E-R-A-N-O-S-S-I-A-N. And I'm on 45 Fisher Avenue, which is across the street from Maloney property. And 40 years ago, when we moved in, I had the same experience because it was open, similar to Maloney's property, the waterway, the brook. And we applied and to the town, you know, whoever was, I don't remember the names and authorities, and they supplied the pipe and they said, "We supply the pipe and we engineer the layout and then you do the construction." We agreed and in no time was done. And we're very happy. And we're concerned with Maloney's property because we're across the street. I mean, with the health problem, mosquitoes and all that, we're right there, we're on the same street, you know? And if I can be of any help with my past experience, I'll be glad to, you know, express myself. And I'm retired and I'm an architect, so I have an idea what's going on as far as engineering and architecture. But the question is, if, again, I'm available, if you have any question or any advice, I'll be, I was here the last time, like, was it two years ago almost? I was here and I said the same thing, I'm repeating myself, you know?
Sorry.
So it's up to you people, if you need me, I'm available.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for listening, thank you.
40 years ago, I was running Public Works, we had a principle at that time, if we gave the pipe to the individual, they would do it, which then when they came to the town, we gave them the pipe, that program may discontinue from town if they give the pipe.
Anybody else who's supposed to speak on this? Please step up, state your name and address.
Steven Fitzgerald, 39, Salina Road, I'm to the east. 39 Salina Road, I'm to the east and to the south. My concern, I mean, you're going to put a flag lot and you're going to put a flag lot and there's really nothing we can do as neighbors about it. We've had problems there with the water for years. I'm not buying Mr. Brennan's, his concerns with the safety, right? I've lived there for 50 years, not in the same house, I lived another house to the east and then I moved into this house that I'm in now. As far as Mr. Brennan contacting my neighbor who is to the west of me, the one that he can't get in touch with, he contacted him two days ago to get in touch with him tonight before the meeting. Okay, this has been going on since December 7th, 2016. So that's my concerns as far as, you're going to do what you're going to do, there's nothing I can do about it. But my concerns are, I don't, I don't want to have this as a false front as far as safety and whatever. To have that piped, I think that would be perfect to have it piped. To have a house right and be on top of me, that's not what I want, but I don't think it's going to, environmentally, I don't think it's going to clean up the whole area around there. I mean, there's other neighbors here, their houses get flooded because of that wet land right there. So as I said, you're going to do what you're going to do, but my concerns are, Mr. Brennan didn't get in touch with that neighbor until two nights ago and found out that he couldn't. Well, I talked to my neighbor today and told him that he couldn't. He has another residence down at the beach and that's why he's down there now. And Mr. Brennan's like, "When can I meet you, when can I meet you?" He's like, "I don't know when I'm going to be home, I have things to take care of down at the beach." So it was a rush today because of the meeting tonight, but it hasn't been a rush for a year and a couple of months, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
How are you tonight? My name is Jim Couch-Brenner and I live just west of the Maloney's home. Yeah, it's K-A-L-C-H-B-R-E-N-N-E-R.
And your address?
80 Fisher Avenue, so it's just the next house west. So there's a space you can see between, there's like a strip of land right there that gets moist, you know, it's been like, we've been in the house for 10 years and it's been wet in those areas, so which is fine. The only concern I have is, I don't even mind that the pipe goes in there, if that's better for them, that's great, if it's great for the environment, I'm all for it. I'm just concerned that, is that going to be, is there going to be like a grade to like a culvert or something so that all of a sudden that area doesn't turn into like a, just a whole mosh pit or turns into something where it starts to seep closer to my home? So that's the only concern I have as far as the piping goes. As far as putting it in, if it helps them out, great, but if it's something that could, you know, hurt somebody else, I'm just, that's the only concern I really have.
Okay, thank you.
And I just got here a bit late, I don't know if that was discussed as far as that will help with the drainage, does having a pipe there help it or does it actually make it worse? I don't know.
Well, they say the pipe is going to correct all the problems.
Okay.
That's engineering, they're engineering and the town's engineering, this is what they said.
Okay.
So it should mitigate, this is what they're saying, it'll mitigate the problems.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who's made comment on this? Can you hear any none, I'll make a motion, do I have a motion?
I'm sorry.
Project review meeting, and we discussed the situation, it was recommended at that time, the last week, that Mr. Dean and myself be in touch with this person and try to seek to talk to the person, okay? When I spoke to Mr. Dean, he said he would be available on Monday. I called the gentleman to try to make a meeting on Monday and that gentleman told me he was not there. So I did this in an orderly fashion, time wise, when I was instructed to do so. And I would like my client to talk to you because she's the one that lived there and she would like to say something about it.
Yes, I just want to add, we've got a neighbor to the south of us, I believe his name is Mr. McGuire. When we were building this home, he had shown up at our meetings and he was very adamant about this water and the pipe, that he had had it with his home being flooded. So now, since the introduction of the subdivision has come to play, it seems that he's kind of backed up, whether it's neighbor influence, I can't speak to that. But I do know that there's a continual water problem there. I had video footage of the danger it becomes in heavy rain. There's no joke about it. The water is aggressive and if a child or a small dog or family pet gets in that water, there is going to be a problem. I don't know what's on in the past, I understand that the woman that owned the property was under her reclusive, she let the town own the property back in the 70s to have this work completed. Understand, north and south have both been piped. And I was told that the reasoning that it wasn't done was because the woman wouldn't let the town access the problem. And in addition to that, I think what needs to be considered, that is very important, is the mosquito issue, okay? I've had the health department out to my home, this is a documented mosquito breeding site. I had three lone daughters, there's something to be said, I have heard about their health as much as my own and neighbors. It would be ignorant to ignore the mosquito issue that's going on right now in this country. So I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public have any comments? Do you have your motion closed?
One more, one more. Name's Brian McLeer, M-C-A-L-E-E-R. A-L-E-E-R. I live on 23 Salina, next door to Mr. McGuire. I think the major thing with Mr. McGuire, he can't be here tonight, but he was more, he wanted the thing to be piped, but his whole thing was, the last meeting was having access, who was going to come in and clean it if they had to come through his property. So that was the biggest thing. So I'll keep this short, but as far as what Steve was saying before, that the fact that you called the guy that morning to meet or two days, I mean, you at least give the guy a week's notice to meet and talk this over. I don't know, I came in late to the meeting, I apologize, but one other thing I'd like to know, if you have any paperwork that I can show Mr. McGuire, he's going to be back at the end of the week, so he's going to want to look this over, show it to his lawyer? If you can give me copies, all right? I've been trying to jot down notes, so, all right? He's not against the pipe, but he just, you know, it's just the last minute stuff. I mean, like Steve says, it wasn't like we were here a month ago, so, all right?
I believe Mr. Greenwell is going to take care of that for you.
And I mean, as far as, yeah, we'd love to see it piped, I hope it corrects it, but the old, are you just doing it for a flag lot or is it just for the mosquitoes?
Here, right here, Jane.
All right, thank you.
And here's the, and here, this too.
Thank you very much.
Do you have them ready so I can read them? So you need to close it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yep?
Like I said before, that what was the last time we met here about this?
January of 17.
Okay, and you just called him the other day.
Okay, please understand, please understand, the boards we've done, the soil conditions we've done, the time has revised, Mr. Dean finally gave us the letter that we need, and all the stuff was put together, we will put on the agenda, we put the application in around. Two months ago, we finally got to the agenda, we're on the board tonight, and the project review, we requested Mr. Dean and myself go see it. That's why we called for the meeting on Monday, okay? It's not critical, we can, we can ask for a condition, either the gentleman gives us the right or we go on the easement where we're supposed to go, it's his right and under the conditions we think are to be clear, we just want the option to get to the zoning board, because the zoning...
Look, I'm going to say one other thing, just going forward, let's be upfront, all right? Don't be sneaky about it, that's all.
Okay, thank you, thank you. What took a year and a half? I mean, it's a year and a half later, you can just back now?
I think one of the problems with putting in a neighborhood with these small samples, I think they had to wait for spring to do the samples for Mr. McGuire, once December is done in spring, that's the first thing. And realistically, I should give a letter to Mr. Dean and tell him about the town, so we can get the asking for, we can get the asking for.
The second, you had two scores, I don't know, one of Mr. Dean, but I mean, I wish you reached out to the guy.
Mr. Maloney, I think it's Mr. Dean's office several times, he's, you know, quite a busy man. He wasn't up there, I sat there a bit and waited for anyone after the letter, and it seemed personal, and he wanted to get in his pocket, the two with the body.
And he was in full support of having that piped. He said the town's been maintaining that for well over 40 years. It's a continual problem on weekends, we got it cleared, so we agree to not back that up. When that thing backs up, I have six to seven feet of water, my war. Okay, when I'm not home, I want to know who's going to be managing the children getting into that water. And there are a lot of new families in the neighborhood, very young children. And I don't want to see anything happen, just to say.
I have a question, something you said before that I didn't know, you said on this, obviously existing for a long time, 40, 50 years or more, and you said it was there before you bought the property, before you built the house. When did you take ownership of the property?
We took it ownership, I'm going to say it was December 2015 winter.
And when did you build the, you built the house on the property?
We built, we knocked down the existing home.
Okay.
And we built, I don't have all the gates of knowledge for hearing exactly.
I was wondering why this wasn't done during the initial construction process?
I can answer that, well, I can answer it from my perspective because I was involved in the original house construction. They had no plans to subdivide it. They were knocking down the house and they situated this house where they wanted it, and this was a very expensive project. This piping is extremely expensive, it's a number of structures, they will have to be custom made, because they're angled, they accept pipes from different angles, it's not going to stand in a catch basin where it goes, one is in, one out. There's several that have multiple inverts that have to be especially constructed angles. That was a lot of money just to do the design. They cannot afford to do this piping without the revenue that the additional lot generates. Just laying that on the table, so they either leave it open or get the subdivision in piped.
I understand the dilemma, I'm just asking because if it's dangerous now, must have been dangerous then.
I don't think they understood how the impact of the, I mean, it looks like this channel should carry the flow. This thing gets backed up where the obstruction at the trash rack, a couple of logs and leaves in the fall and it starts to back up like crazy and quickly.
I don't know the history of the project, but I just wonder if the construction, you know, contributed to...
know, contributed to that increasing the problem or not?
No, there was a house there before the driveway, and it had some minimal impact. I, I don't, I don't see that.
Yeah, uh, since you're looking to subdivide, besides the piping, uh, looking at the envelope for the proposed second structure, what's the square footage on that? I don't see it here. This is the proposed dwelling.
Proposed, well, the square footage is covered by, covered by tippy or something. I mean, square footage of the building, it's not something on the...
No, it's, it's on page one, I was looking at page two, which has all of the other things. If you don't think on page one, the, yeah, seventeen thousand eight square feet.
That's the lot. That's the lot.
That's the lot area. What would the house?
It would be an F.A.R. that would comply, so it would be less than thirty-four hundred square feet.
And that's going by the envelope you have now?
Correct.
And that would be about thirty-four hundred square feet?
That would be the maximum.
That's the maximum.
That's a, that's a big house.
Yeah, it's a very big house. No, I, I don't wanna have to go, what we did with the last thing, where they come back with the, with the, we have a, we have an envelope that we approved for a subdivision, and then they come back with a house that's eight thousand feet bigger.
Okay, but they, but the thing is, is that they can come back, because if they wanna go to the zoning board and get the, uh, the, you know, to, to appeal, it's not, this is a placeholder. So this, they're subdivided, and they put a placeholder on it about the size of the house. Whether or not that's, that's what we learned the other day, whether or not that's the size of the house is, is, it's, it's a placeholder. They can or they can't. If they wanna, if they want to adhere to the F.A.R., then that's the size, that's the maximum. If they wanna go bigger, then they have to get it, they have to get it...
Well, no, we, we approved the several subdivisions, and they come back afterwards with a much larger house. We saw it over in Topeka, that's one of the problems we have with the developer there.
Yes.
If, if I had seen it was gonna be that large of a house originally, I would've voted against the subdivision in the first place.
But that's not the point, that's not, but they, or they can tell you right now that it's gonna be thirty-four hundred feet, and come back to us and say, well, we changed our mind. They have a right to change their mind. If they come back, then we have a right to say, hey, listen, just like we did with the other applicant, you told us it was gonna be thirty-four hundred feet, now you're proposing fifty-five hundred feet, we're, we're not happy with that. But they don't have to tell us right now what size this is, and we can't, you know, you can certainly, or anybody on the board can certainly say, we're making, we just want you to know, don't come back to, as you as an individual can say, don't, I'm not gonna approve this over the F.A.R. So if you come back and tell us it's gonna be bigger, you're gonna have a problem with me. That's the issue, okay?
So you're saying that this envelope is gonna be within the F.A.R. and not above it?
Again, he doesn't know, because they're not gonna, they, they haven't...
It's a house, specific house plan.
Right.
And, and by the way, once the subdivision is approved, the, the house plan would not come back for, we'd go with the architectural approval. And if they were gonna request the variance, we'd have to go to the zoning board. I'm not putting words in the applicant's mouth, but the, the building that we're showing would comply with the floor area ratio. And there's, there's no plan to provide, and then to ask for a variance. We're going to do that, we could do it now, if we need to. For instance, because I mentioned before that they had no plans to subdivide, the house is not in a perfect location to accommodate this subdivision that's being proposed. So we have to ask our variance for the floor area ratio and the, and the, on the, the existing house, because we're giving it seventeen thousand square feet, it slightly puts the existing house slightly over the F.A.R. point two, seven point two.
Could we ask that they come back to us for approval of the site plan, as a condition?
Okay, well, I don't think that's what Mr. Mandel is asking. I think what Mr. Mandel is asking is that once they make, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but once they tell you that they wanna put a house on there, that they have to come back to us? The answer is no, they don't. You can, you can certainly say, okay, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm just saying generally, you can say, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I want the zoning board of appeals to understand that we're in favor of this, us as a group are saying, and I, I would have no problem saying that as a group, myself, that we noticed that we, we are being presented with the, with the structure that has the potential to have a F.A.R. of whatever at thirty-four hundred square feet approximately, and we are not in favor of going above that. That's our opinion, that's, this is a board. Now whether or not the zoning board of appeals wants to grant the variance, we have no say in that, okay? So you can, you're, 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 you can either say you're, yes or no, but you can't, you can't make, they haven't proposed a house yet, so you can't say as we, you know, that's not the rule. The rule doesn't, if, that's, it's just not the rule. You can't say, well, I'm not gonna approve it because I don't know what size the house is. They, they put this thing in there, uh, and it's a placeholder.
Well, we can approve a subdivision, and still require them as a condition that they come back and show a site plan for that subdivision, as we did in two prior cases.
Absolutely.
Sunrise and the place.
Yes, yeah.
If I may, both of those cases did not have a generic site plan, and that's why you required them to come back. They didn't show any grading, they didn't show any drainage, and they didn't show any house. They didn't show anything. We're showing a full, a full monkey. The only thing I wanna say is the thirty-four, thirty-four hundred includes the garage, covered porches.
I was gonna say decks and all that.
Yeah, so it's not living space, it's not a mon, you know, monster house, it includes all the other stuff. And I...
And you were, you were, you were...
Yeah, well, that's, that's... Yeah, that's the second one that we're achieving, the whole drainage drainage.
They have to come back.
Per test, the dry wells, everything.
The other two applications that you referenced, Mandel, did not have drainage design of the drainage pump, so that's a great issue.
Right, so this would be full g, full drainage, okay?
Exactly.
And at the PRC meeting, we actually discussed obtaining a negative that is not worth tonight and pre-决定.
So they'd have to come back.
Well, they have to come back because they're going to the ZBA anyway.
Correct, right. So, yeah, and yet they have to, of course, the ver, approval.
From town board.
So the idea was, a system moving forward, knowing that they will not get final, get all of those other approvals, and some type of agreement, that's information that's not happening.
Okay, alright, it sounds...
And that was the, that was one on the FPRC meeting.
Yeah, I would've been there, but I was at the stepping up ceremony, you know, so that's...
That's the president.
We missed...
Oh, yeah.
Jane, could I see the side note?
Is that up?
Yeah. Have you, have you also...
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Anybody else have a motion, a public motion?
Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion, a motion.
I'm gonna ask for motion, close a public motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay. What are we, the preliminary on this?
Pre-p preliminary, preliminary.
Preliminary.
So I'll make a motion, uh, for, I, don't, just quiet, okay? That's all I'm telling you. I need a motion, I'll make a motion for lead agency.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
I will make a motion for negative deck.
Second. Mr. Young, second. In favor?
Aye.
I will make, sorry. I'll make a motion for pre, uh, for preliminary with conditions.
And the conditions are?
Mazers ten, planning seven, health one, Jimmy Dean's condition from December seventh, two thousand sixteen, Jane Slavens, three, with the three variances that are required, also... And also, what's that?
Prior letters?
Yeah, okay, good. So Bruce Peters, twelve, from December eighth.
Did you get Jimmy Dean's letter?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Correspondence from the D E C. And then all of the various groups of people who don't observe, object of our surveys, lead agency, that's all I have. Cheryl, can you please give that to Cheryl? Those are hers.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Bond, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One opposition. Mr. Sweeney?
I made the preliminary, Mr. Bond made the second. Do you want these back?
This one, so I'll take the Bruce Peters one.
Yeah. Oh, okay, that's what I'm asking. Thank you. Okay. I don't know if it's in there. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who's Bruce, who's Bruce Peters, who owned Bruce Peters?
Me.
Okay, uh, next item is P V eighteen dash nineteen, Celtic sheet metal site plan amendment.
I don't have, this is all I have for this thing. Bless you.
Bless you.
I bless you.
Okay, please sign in, state your name for the record, please.
Al Breder, Trenton, Texas. Jay Greenwell, names of it.
Okay, uh, hold on. Uh, please, could you take any discussion outside? Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to hear this application? Okay, you're up front. Anybody else, please step forward. Okay, thank you. Could you explain it, sir?
Yeah, okay, this one's a little complicated, but I think I'll clear it up. My first, it's probably around three or four years ago, we actually, as, we actually manufactured the first part of the building, we broke the large extension to the back. We had some difficulties with the extension in terms of interpretation and things that weren't done and were not done. We obtained before your board, and your board said we wanted certain corrections made. And the reason we really came here is because this thing also was in court, because we did get certain violations as related to certain things that we've done to you. What we're here is what we've, we've looked at that, everything that the planning board asked for, and everything on it is gonna clarify the requirements of the court. So we're here to, to file, so that finally get through, and the requirements of town, and those voting for, to say that we met with requirements.
PRC has no additional comments. From Jane Slavens, site plan shall include a note that no outside storage of goods, materials, and our equipment is permitted. Uh, there's correspondence from N H A Sun. There's this short E A F. And then there's correspondence from the neighbor with pictures, and a police report, I believe. And also, let's see what this is. Resume of operations of equipment. Highlighted number of employees, seventy maximum, number anticipated, one fifty. Operation days of week five, hours of operation, six A.M. to six P.M. That's what was on the performance standards, that you submitted, I'm assuming to the Z B A? Okay, just to make that, uh, Cheryl, is there anything else?
Global letters from the prior meetings.
I don't have, I don't have those.
I believe so.
I just had one word.
Give me the, uh, plan.
I didn't get the plan, sorry.
They weren't read into the...
They were read in already, but I have to...
No, I'm just saying, you were read in already.
Yeah, okay, so that everything else was read in, but I'm gonna have to, when we do the, right, I have to end up this. Okay, that's all the new stuff that I have. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Young?
I have no comment on this project.
Uh, I don't have any questions now, except that we were given pictures and comments over the last couple of weeks. I'm assuming that the neighbor's gonna have something to say about this, that, um, what you're saying is gonna disagree with what the neighbors are saying, so just be prepared.
Mr. Sweeney?
I think I wanna wait until after the public speaks.
Mr. Mandel?
Just a quick comment, and, uh, I, I just looked at the property again today, and there's still a container by the southwest corner, the south side.
I'm sorry, what was that word?
Container.
Oh.
Alright, C.O.N.
I got it, I couldn't hear you, you're talking away from me.
I'm talking to the microphone.
I think so.
A container on the southwest corner, uh, then you have fabricated items still by the dumpster on the west side. So this, uh, that's still there as of today, and I think we spoke about that at the last meeting, about outside storage and fabricated items.
Yeah, so, okay, so let's, let's talk about that while Mr. Mandel brought it up. You have to bring everything in, right? You have to put everything in, does a container count as putting it in? Does that count? Is it, if it's in a container, does that count? Yeah. It just can't be outside the container and stored.
They had a bunch of H C C, just stored on site.
So Mr. Mandel just said that he was there yesterday, correct? Oh, today.
And there's still fabricated items outside, right by the dumpster area?
So then, how, like, alright, so is, is the applicant saying that everything has been corrected? Or is there a date that says we're gonna have them corrected? I don't understand. Like, what, what's our, what's your role in this? You know, like, there, there were violations issued, correct? And then they come to us, and we say, and then they, they're supposed to come back to us and say, planning board, we've, we've corrected the violations. Have the violations been corrected, and who's going out to make sure that the violations are corrected?
The vote unfortunately, which will, but it's the final report, so I'll just...
We're here to try to correct the problems that exist there. We take, we draw, the trucks will now be able to line up away from the Navy's field, will be able to line up where you want. We were checking, we were taking the areas and saying, no way would anything be stored in the areas that were questionable. We are here to clean up the problem. Remember, this is still in the phase of completion, they're installing it, I have to seal all of the building. That's why we're here, we're here to put in the mechanics so that we can do away with all these violations.
Okay, well, I would think, and this is just my one person's opinion, that in the weeks since you've last been here, that one of the major, that one of the easiest things to do is to clean up the site, and get the stuff that's on the site that shouldn't be on the site, clean it up. Now, why hasn't that happened?
I believe the major portion of the stuff that is outside is taken away and stored inside the building. In fact, if anything, they're gonna be designing area inside the building so that we'll not have that stored problem outside again.
You're not answering the question. Mr. Mandel, how much is Ivan go out there? So you'll have to tell us.
There was, there was two large pieces outside, by the back of the sewer, adjacent to the dumpster, by the loading dock there, so it's two. They're pretty...
Let me just find out the storage container that you're talking about.
Yeah.
That, that's how we should deal with that situation. Everything has to be...
Yeah, this, that stuff that was on the, uh, on the flatbeds, is just another...
No, this is, this is the black container.
Yeah, you're making the turn coming around from the south side of the podium is right there. Yeah, so you're making the turn coming around from the south side of the building, it's right there.
It was, it was a ton of art, it was two ton of art, it was one ton of trailer. And we're going to use methods, we have shipping materials in central, it's in front of the art containers. We have the main rail car from the Bronx, the Red Central Station. And what you have is sold, it's, I don't know, I don't know there, I don't see them, we're shipping material, and containers out in the Bronx. So it was possibly, you know, actually...
No, I wasn't talking about stuff on the, on the trailer, so this was a... On the ground, not, yeah, not the garbage, not, uh, this, yeah, yeah, it was the first one.
Okay, I'm confused then. Is this stuff that's like...
There's stuff that's out, and then there's also the container, which I thought they were moving from that location.
But again, if...
As you came around. But there is fabricated items, and they're large, and they're, he knows what I'm talking about, right? By the dumpster, by the, uh, the loading dock where you wanna put storage now, whatever. Yeah, that's still there. Several large pieces I could see.
The outdoor vehicle storage that is being requested will solve the problem of having material outside.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
I have a question. Your working hours, you say, uh, is from six to six.
Well, that's not, I like, when we reported ZBA and we checked the minutes, we told them we were gonna do two shifts. We told them we're gonna do two shifts, not one, but two shifts in back. We told them about three, and then they agreed to two shifts. So I, we're gonna have to correct that, so if they are permitted to do two shifts on loading for ZBA.
Okay, because I, we got some, just a couple of videos from the town. I guess from one of the neighbors, and it was pitch black out, and it was trucks backing up, and there was a lot of noise going around, banging and everything else. And it's pitch black outside, and this is not fair to the neighbors.
I don't know what you saw, what you saw, but one of the things that we are trying to make sure that these trucks don't go near the neighbors. If you take a look at the drawing, all these loading areas are away from the neighbors. So therefore, these trucks will be backing up, and they won't be going around the building when the neighbors are off. All the trucks are, they're gonna be loaded on the west side, which is not gonna affect the neighbors. So, which is what the board wanted, and that's what we did, that's John drawing. So they will be loading during the two shifts, and I believe will not be affecting the neighbors at all.
Because only you have, on the west, west side. Where you have trees on one side of the driveway and the building on the other side, that acts like a little tunnel, and, and the, the neighbor is down at one end. So that noise gets amplified in there.
That's to the south, where the neighbors are, but it's south, they will be running to the south.
Right, neighbors is south, but the tree line is to the west, and that's where the noise comes from.
Oh, yeah? What, what I think of...
No, 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 I, I don't want you to take the truth out by any means, but I'm just saying. The video showed it was pitch black out, the trucks were backing up because of the backup alarms, and there's a lot of noise going on, and that's really not fair to the neighbors.
Just please let me correct one thing. When we came forward, the board, we were saying we were not loading from the rear, we're originally loading from the rear. We said we would move all the stuff to the west side away from the neighbors. If you take a look at the drawings, you can see, this is a working function, we're sorry, but this is a commercial piece of property. We're sorry for the neighbors, the neighbors are residential, they're not in town in Orange Town, this is Orange Town. And this is a commercial piece of property where they're trying to operate their plant. And the truth of the matter is, we, we definitely find, that everything the board has asked for, and has loading on the west side, which is what the board wanted. And, and, you know, we're not gonna put it on the south side, you're definitely not gonna have any motors. And there's no way to put it on the east side, and it's definitely not gonna be in front of the board. So I believe we met the requirements of the planning board, and the planning board asked us to do exactly what we did. We are now loading on the west side, which is what the planning board asked the last time we were here.
So, so this stuff that's in this picture here, is that still there to move?
I don't know what's in the picture.
It's in behind, it's behind the building, it's in the back of the building. There's a container there, there's, it's like there's a, that container's been removed, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think the container is safe. Uh, it's...
Why?
I'm just asking.
Hey, I would do a change, you'd be there, and it's supposed to be parking, it's supposed to be storage for the containers.
Okay, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, so...
Here, you can have these.
It's same picture as the last one.
That's when you're, if, that's when you take that one, it's when the area is now with the, the board.
That's all of them, so that's been taken.
That's the way.
So...
Okay, so what about this copy of the resume of operations of equipment? From Celtic Sheet Metal, what about this? This is, this is, I think that...
I'll do a attempt to clear it up, I know very basically, we were permitted to do two shifts.
Well, I mean, we need somebody to clarify that, I mean, that's not...
We will clarify if there are violations that have issued violation to, well, if you have a case, you will, and ZBA, you can do that.
Okay, well, that's all I need to know, right, that's, that's either, that's not us.
What, once the plan is approved, if they're putting the plans on the location that, that are shown on the plan, we can ensure that violations, if there are violations, they're seconded. We can continue to issue violations if they do not cooperate with all the rules.
Understood. But, the violation, we're, we're, okay, but we're only dealing with the violations that were issued at hand. We're not dealing with future violations, so the question is, they're here to correct the violations. They saying that, there's some of the violations have been corrected, but for us, for them to correct the remaining violations that have been issued, they have to get approval for this tonight, so that they can make those provisions?
Right, and then they'll have to look back, report, and demonstrate...
That they've done that.
That this is our approved plan, and we're going to go back to the required tools, and we've now met with the plan.
Right.
If there's still a violation of that, then we're...
Now, okay, so let's go back, that's, that's done. If they are still in violation of that, do they come back to us? No, right, okay.
We don't be handled because ZBA...
Right, you, the judge, and then, right.
Violations, all subjects left.
Were they issued a violation for not being, uh, conforming two hours of operation?
No. And we will definitely check.
Okay, we have to look at very carefully, there are two problems, there are two, there are two plans here. One may have a, uh, one may have one condition, the other may have the other condition. So I really would like to investigate.
No, you can, I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying that you are or you aren't, I'm just saying that the, that the, that the issue was raised. I, I'm not the, we're not the enforcement, uh, part of this, we're just the, we're the over, the overseers, I guess.
We will look into it, well.
Mr. Garby, one of the biggest violations that they have right now is the fact that they're occupying buildings.
Oh, there you go.
They can't get the CO until they're permitted a site plan to prove.
Okay, I understand.
With the park, bank parking spaces.
Correct.
What, what'd you say?
With the bank parking spaces?
They're here for the bank parking space, for the site plan amendment.
What space are we banking?
Northeast.
Where it's, uh, where it's the landscaping, but in that area. Okay. So why aren't we, aren't we banking, uh, those few spaces on the south end of the park? Like where you have, you obviously don't use it as parking, you were using it for storage, so. Like it, you bank those also. Back with it. You know, that's where the neighbors are from, the jerk, and back there. I understand they need the road there for a fire access, but as short as that, you don't need, you need a parking, you know? Well, there's nobody parking there now, so, you know? I guess I store yet, so it's a tough one, it was a few dollars.
Well, the original plan approved that, the problem I'm not involved is that, what we're asking the land bank, they didn't wanna change the architecture of the building. It was a very good looking building in front of it, so that's the reason we're asking the land bank that area, because we don't believe those parking spaces. That's the reason we asked, the reason we asked for awareness, because it was originally approved, and they don't have a problem with that. And they don't be having to be in a problem with it.
Will we put the addition up? I mean, was there an addition? Yes. Those, those parking spaces are already installed.
They're installed and you're approved. We might have to find, we're asking other ones, I see.
Is there anybody else on the board that have any comments?
I'm gonna open it up to the public.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna open it up to the public, please step forward and state your name and your address, please.
Mike Policastro, it's P O L I C A S T R O, four Lone Cedar Way. Um, I just had a quick question before I start. Um, the letter that's attached that says no outside storage and, and parking, um, no outside storage and so forth, is that, is that written down, and is that set? I don't have to comment on the outside storage? Or do I have to?
All the letters were read in.
Right, okay, so what they're adding to the site plan?
I guess, what are we talking about outside storage?
No, Mrs. Slavin is asking for that to be on the plan.
Yes, that's why it's on the plan.
Could you have a container out there and stuff sorted?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that's a problem.
Can that be in?
As per the plan that you approved and locations that are shown.
Okay, so...
You can't start putting stuff all back in here, you have a storage container back here, which is...
You can have it in the back.
Right, right.
Yeah, here they are now, wait, there's no...
Right, so add it in, no, also then, it's, you know, same thing concrete on their site, and that's the reason.
Because as of before the meeting, I drove by, and there's no storage at all in the back.
Currently, today does not, no. They moved it, they moved it a few weeks ago.
Are you, are you ready?
I'm ready.
You're getting your three minutes.
Okay. Uh, so my home backs up to the Celtic building, some of the photos that you see there is what I'm showing you where my property lies. You know, I'm, I'm against the outside storage for sure. We, they, we also previously discussed parking trucks outside overnight, and they said, no. The vehicles do ride behind the building to get to the side of the building where they load, so it is noisy. The videos that you've seen, yes, I've taken some of them as well as my neighbors, uh, it is obnoxious. Uh, up to ten o'clock at night, um, the one video that I think you're referring to, uh, there's banging and machinery going off in the building, as well as the reverse beeping. And that's after the police department asked the, asked the, the, uh, employees to close the doors. So when the doors are open of the building, the noise is obnoxious. Um, I could share more with you if you'd like, because I got a library full. So I, I'm wondering if possibly, when they initially asked for this, this building, they said that the equipment, the noisy equipment would be farthest away from the residents. I'm wondering if something got reshifted, because this is intolerable in regards to the sounds that are coming from this building. So I'm wondering if we could look into that, uh, and if possible, if they can move it, or whatever else has to be done. Um, outside storage, if that, if that's taken care of, that's fantastic. You know, the hours of operation, you know, the, the one document that they submitted said six to six, uh, five days a week. Why would they document something different than, than what was actual? Again, they are there until after ten o'clock at night, as you could see per the police report. If I'm supposed to contact the police, the police department to correct these issues, these noise variance issues, because you can't make that much noise after hours, I'll continue to do so, but I think they have better things to do than me, uh, dealing with noise complaints. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else in the public have any comments on this? Okay, ask for a motion to close the public, motion. Mr. Young, second. Mr. Bond, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What are we gonna do with this?
Uh, well, they're saying that, uh...
We have to give the land bank, uh, parking spaces, this way you can get your CO, and, uh, uh, this is my view of it, I...
Keep going.
And, and that'll allow you to clean up the violations and...
That's what I say, let them clean up the violations, and if they issue more violations, then that's, you know, this is a... You know, we're, we're not the enforcement arm, okay? We are not the enforcement arm. You can come here and you can complain about what they do or what they don't do, but we don't have any rights to tell them, to say, you know, that's, uh, you know, it's frustrating, but that's just the way it is. You'll have to either call the buildings department and tell them that they're in violation, and see if they wanna send somebody out, or you can call the police, and if the police come back to the buildings department saying they're in violation, then the biggest thing that we're going to find out is if they're in violation of the performance standards for hours of operation. That's the one that we're gonna be working on. You can't speak. So, um, uh, so that's the, I, so I say, let's, what do we have to do here, Mr. Pacula, are we gonna?
I'm saying reaffirm.
Okay, I am going to make a motion that we reaffirm a negative deck.
Second.
Mr. Mandel, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
And now I am going to say that we will make a motion for preliminary with conditions. You can speak, you're the applicant, you're allowed to speak. Oh, fine, fine, I'm sorry, okay, I thought that they had, I thought they had to come back to us after ZBA, but no. Okay, so I'm making a motion for final with conditions.
They're not going back to the ZBA unless...
You tell them.
They're fined for in violation of the ZBA.
Okay, fine, that's what I got, all right, so that's good to know, you can hold on to that. So let us talk about conditions. Holy... I know, but there is stuff that is important. That's a letter from... Okay, so Jane Slavin's one condition from June twenty-sixth. Comments? The short EAF from six eight eighteen. The letter from, uh, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation from April twenty-third. They have no comments on their April twenty-third letter, but all comments from their May eighteenth letter, two thousand and fifteen, are still in effect. Bruce Peters has no objection. Rockland County Planning. No... Rockland County Planning doesn't have any comments. Sorry. You have to, uh, make any applications to the Department of Health for, for the private sanitary sewer main. If you need to. If you need to. Uh, sewer, again, and then correspondent to the ZBA not objecting to our serving as lead agency, that's all I have, Cheryl. I'm sorry, you can speak too. Did we give Cheryl my letters here? No, this is the, you're gonna give her letters back? No, no, right here.
Not here.
So she doesn't know? Yeah, so give that back to her. What are we waiting here for? Sorry. Tick tock, tick tock.
You said you had a rule for excessive storage here.
Loading docks on the first building.
Well, you have approval for loading, that's not excessive storage.
I, I can't imagine there's any excessive storage, I would find out if we leave that.
Yeah, I don't think there would be.
Well, the problem is, we got, I don't think, we didn't give them approval for outside storage.
Right.
Right. They have the containers.
You have the containers, you can't store anything, you can't have a container.
What's outside vehicle storage?
The trucks were permitted to line up in the loading docks overnight. That's, that's...
The loading dock, yes.
And the loading docks, the only place the trucks are lined up on the loading...
Okay, but here's the thing...
What about the containers that are on the ground?
Okay, good.
Uh, down here, okay, this here.
Yeah.
That's not lining up the loading dock. Okay, but that's not the way you park the loading dock, correct?
No.
These are shoulders, barrels of the building.
For overnight, overnight parking, if you kill the storage.
So, but it, what, we need to look back at this, when we saw Bob question storage, permanent outside storage. So we're saying there's not, yeah, it's beautiful.
The park, the trucks don't park there.
But not containers.
Well, the trucks have contained it.
Yeah, right.
It's about...
It's not, it's not a storage, it's not a storage on the dock, trucks have a...
That's different.
No, there is a container on the ground, not on the truck.
The containers are picked up and put on the truck. That's not permanent container.
The containers are not used for storage, they're used for transportation, they're not specific, it's not for storage.
But they could be, they could be there overnight, could be there overnight. Now, I, I get that.
Now, I, I get that.
It's the same as a truck, it's, it's a structure, it's a structure.
It's a little bit unusual in this case, it's a container.
It's just maybe something that's...
It's not back in the, the... It could be after weeks.
So you have anything else, Cheryl?
I don't think that she's ready to say, I know.
Well, there's gonna be...
The problem is not being part of the original issue of the private, it's our stuff, I know.
On the south side of the building, on the rear side, there's gonna be nothing back there, other than employee...
Correct.
At least, that's all, it's not, not gonna be anything else stored back there.
Not containers, not trucks, not trucks parking, nothing.
That's, you know, that's, that's where, that's what the show, nothing.
Okay, then we're... I don't wanna, I don't wanna... I know, what do I... Go ahead.
All right.
Wait, wait.
We're absolutely made a condition to the approval, that if I find that this was not previously approved, when I go back through the records, that they, that they had the ZBA.
Yeah.
If we find that this was okay through previous rules, then...
Fine. I, I have no problem with that condition.
Okay, anybody else have a problem with that?
Not at all.
Okay, so we need a second.
No, now we need a second. Oh, fine, anybody else? Mr. Bond, all favor?
Opposed, none, please. Thank you.
Cheryl, minutes?
Yes, thirteen.
I wasn't here.
If you can say, or if you can still say, you're allowed.
All favor?
I'm just...
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Dismissal? You can still review the minutes.
I did read them.
We got motion to adjourn.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
I will not be here the next evening, Bruce, we have a building, come see you.
I won't be here either, we have enough people.